Good evening. Town of Hatfield, Mass. Public Planning Board meeting notice, April 12th at 6:00 PM, Memorial Town Hall. Chairman is Robert Bartlett, Paul Dostal alternate. Members of the board are Paul Lavie, Bob Wagner, and Ron Sassy. Our first discussion tonight would be Jean Mazick and Jay Niles. Is that both of you or?
No.
Okay, Jean Mazick then. Come forward and tell us what's going on.
Gentlemen, I'm Jean Mazick. I live at 69 Old Stage Road in West Hatfield. My husband, Bill, has been before the board numerous times since May of 2014. Unfortunately, with his passing in December, I'm kind of like working on an alternate plan here. He had, I guess, approached for open space development.
That's right.
What I'm really looking for, I'm not interested in developing. I just would like permission for like pull five acres of the identified portion so that I can build something smaller, something more manageable.
You can put it right on here if you'd like.
And I just need to know what we need to do in order to-
Is this a new plan?
To make this happen. This was, I think he had presented last year.
Yeah, this is about-
This is for the open space.
Yeah, this is where we had gotten and had, and actually, we were pretty favorably inclined towards this. He needed to just find an entity to hold the easement on the open space part.
Okay, and I'm not sure what the deed, what that all means, but what I'm looking, this is the current house now, is this parcel here, almost five acres toward the road, is if I were able to have that separated from the rest of the parcel so that I'd be able to build something smaller. I have actually two here, so if you want to-
Yeah, so I think if I remember correctly, Paul, the challenge was that there isn't road frontage on Old Stage Road for that, to be a separate lot?
Well, I think what he was looking for in the open space development, this is the frontage, this would become the frontage. We have three properties behind us.
That's a new road. That would be a new road though, that's-
But, I mean, we aren't really looking for the town to maintain it or develop it. I mean, three families are using this already. We're using this, it would just be another building there.
What do these families use for access?
Our road.
That road. What do they have for frontage?
It's on Lindsay.
On Lindsay, I believe.
Yeah, it goes all the way.
Comes all the way down to Lindsay.
Oh my God, how long has that existed?
No, forever.
Because they're using it, it doesn't mean that it's illegal.
A public highway.
A public highway.
Well, that's been the crux of the matter all the way through. I can't go too far here. That's been the crux of the matter all the way through, of no legal road frontage.
So that's why we were proposing or suggesting that he consider the open space development.
Okay, and I guess that's the approach he was using, because this is what-
Right, would be the area-
The portion he would keep open.
Right.
With the potential for the additional lots.
Lots which you could then, you could choose to develop or not develop. I mean, if he chose just to do this one, the challenge is, is that, and that's what we were talking to Bill about, was setting the precedent of allowing a small parcel without the required road frontage, because there's so many places all around town that are in similar situations. Maybe not with this kind of a road, but where they have like a little bit of parcel that goes out to the road without enough road frontage.
Okay, so then what-
If you had 200 feet of frontage, it wouldn't be a problem, but that's the llama that we have.
Yeah, this right here, Lot 4, is the only-
The only one that has 200 feet of frontage.
But this is an existing house, that's your existing house.
That's the existing house.
Right, so that would then be landlocked by creating Lot 4, because right now you have frontage down there.
Well, it must have approved for open space, because then this would be the frontage.
No, 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 if they did the open space development, that would be the road.
I know, but I don't understand how that could be, you know, adequate access. The town would have to, don't we have something to say about creating a new road?
Well, no, that was where we, that's where things sort of, this isn't a new road, it'd be a private road. In the open space development, they're private roads.
Okay.
And so that was the, there were two issues that Bill still had to address. One was getting the fire department to agree to a turnaround.
Okay, and I guess they did a drill in the fall, October of 2014, or the summer of 2014, and they had no issues, so I just need to get them to say that they had no issues?
Yeah, I mean, we have a new fire chief, but yeah, you'd need to get some kind of confirmation of that.
Okay.
And then the other thing is, the open space development, Paul has it open, requires that there be a, there's a couple different common open space, Paul, at 62.9 is the, that was the other stumbling block, next page, I think.
Common open space requirements. A minimum of 40% of the total development parcel must be permanently protected as common open space. At least 70% of the common open space shall be retained in contiguous areas unless approved by the planning board. Water courses, lakes, ponds, do you have any wet waters, lakes, ponds?
There are ponds back here.
But this isn't your property.
No.
On your property.
On our, well, no, I guess we sold the piece that had the lake, the pond number.
It said, water courses, lakes, ponds, wetlands, and steep slopes over 25% may not be included in common open space.
Okay, so this is open space.
That's all, that's not, that's okay up in there.
Right.
Just as far as calculating it.
Yeah, so that's, he had Eaton, this is Eaton, right, come up with that. And so the, so then the other thing is, is that the common open space, and this is where we had left it with him, and he was going to go back and think about it, was it has to be owned by a nonprofit land trust or a conservation organization or a homeowners association or an individual. So you could own the common open space. But it has to have a conservation easement or deed restriction placed on it, conveyed to the town, so that you couldn't then come back and develop it in 20 years or something like that. So it needs to have a conservation easement placed on it, which is to the town, and you could, you could, you know, I don't know how close you are to the Fitzgerald Lakes, you know, that, there's that whole conservation effort going on.
No, no.
No.
Nowhere near it, okay.
It's not even far away.
Okay, so it could make more sense for however many of you and your family members here to have a homeowners association or to see if one of the local land trusts would hold the property, but you still have to have a easement, a conservation easement recorded that's held by the town. In fact, it would probably be held by the Conservation Commission. So that's very simple to do, actually.
Okay.
And Space Committee actually would help, could help with that.
Yeah.
If you get on their agenda.
Okay.
And then, so then, your plan here would be, you know, if everything goes well with the fire department, because I think Bill had said that the town can waive the requirements on the road if it's, if there are, and there are certain waives, waivers that we can make depending upon the development proposal. You would have a project that would have potentially five lots, right? One, two, three, four, five.
Four new lots.
Four new lots, which you could choose to not do anything with, or you could choose to just do this one. And then that way, we're not running afoul of the 200 feet road frontage requirement, and we're getting some permanent open space.
Once those lots are deemed lots, does she have to pay tax on them, or can she leave them in forestry like they are now?
Well, you could probably, yeah, because you can, people have lots, they're all over five acres, right? They're five acre, well, this one is 4.9, but-
That's the one I would build on.
That's the one you would build on, so the other ones are five acres, which is the minimum lot size for 61.
Okay, because they're currently in 61.
And 61.
Okay, okay.
What's the percentage?
Common open space requirements, a minimum 40% of the total development parcel must be permanently protected as common open space. At least 70% of the common open space, so they've got what, roughly five?
One, two, three, four, five.
25 acres. Plus 13, 20, 33 acres. And then I gotta take four.
Well, no, even, but the 33 acres-
The open spaces.
Oh, that's already over.
That's 13.
It's 41%.
41%, right.
So it's over.
Yeah, so it just says tad over. And then, and it says at least 70% of the common open space shall be retained in contiguous areas. Well, the whole thing is contiguous, so, yeah.
It's all connected.
It's more of a tap dance issue, Jeanie, to get it all, you know, through everybody, okay? Than it really is a trouble issue.
Okay.
It's doing the things that are necessary to get there.
Okay, so it sounds like open space committee as far as deeding this, and then the fire department?
Yeah, so you're gonna have to address-
I made a mistake, it's not 40%. I did it again, and I got 36%.
It's 30.
Well, I'd like to think that when they went through this, that they had just enough.
I would think Randy must have figured that, didn't he?
Well, again, I'll try it one more time.
Give it a nose shot.
Two, three, four, five, that's 25. Yeah, it's 25, it's 25 plus 13.67. That's 38.7.
Okay, now divide that by-
So 13.67 divided by 38.7 equals 35% now. It keeps getting smaller. This has to be 40% of the whole parcel, correct?
Right.
At least 40%.
At least a minimum of 40%.
Okay, which would just make these lots smaller.
A little smaller, you just push this line a little bit this way, you'll probably get to where you need to be.
And how would he label this access? How would, how would a surveyor label that? Proposed private way? It would probably be nice to say it connects with another private way. This one comes up from Lindsay?
No, it's a dead end.
That's a dead end.
Oh, these people have frontage on Lindsay?
No, they got, that's what they've got. They got frontage on Lindsay all the way back down to the blacktop.
But there's no, there's no driveway.
There's no driveway.
The driveway comes in on this end.
They abandoned, they abandoned all of that from the Lindsay side years ago.
Are there homes in here?
There were three homes.
There is, there is three homes.
There are three homes now.
And they, they have a right of way across your property?
Correct.
The only way to get to their homes is through the-
So they were all landlocked.
But the frontage, the frontage requirement for the zoning is on Lindsay Road.
Yeah, but if Jean was to say that, if Jean was to not give them access or build a long time ago, there's no way they could ever get some progress.
Right, right, but now that it's there, you can't take it away. I mean, it's a right of way that goes across.
Let's, say I can see this maybe has frontage somewhere, but this, I don't see how that could have frontage. And these too, I just-
They do, they run all the way.
I think some Lindsay, yeah.
But the lines, the lines don't allow for it. You know what I mean? This is a different parcel than that. This one's the same parcel, so I can see that having frontage somewhere. But where do these guys have frontage?
They have the same thing, they have frontage on Lindsay Road. This other one has frontage on Lindsay Road. Where the third one came about, I don't know. That was all done before Billy bought this piece, really, right? And then that was bought from Stywires, right? Before they had, developed that.
Lenny Houns had the, and it was just a dirt road.
Dirt road.
And my husband widened it and put TRG and stuff and made it, it's actually a better road than Upper Old Stage.
Yeah, right. I figured this to be about 15, have to be 15.4 acres.
The open space requirements must allow for some kind of agreement that someone's going to maintain this road, right?
No, yeah, the people-
The homeowners association.
Homeowners.
The homeowners association.
Billy's been doing it.
So they do create a homeowners association?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, so it's kind of like a condo, and that they have to do that?
Right.
Okay.
Okay, homeowners association, the event the ownership of the land will remain with the homeowners in the open space to build a nonprofit. Homeowners association shall be established requiring membership of each lot owner, which would be one. Association shall be responsible for the permanent maintenance of all common lands, common open space, recreational thoroughfare facilities, not drinking water. Any drinking water, we talked about drinking water, homeowner shall be removed, well, let's see what the, you may want to get a copy of our zoning laws.
Yeah.
Just, just so you have it. You can either go online or-
Yeah, so it looks like you're, you know, it could be that maybe what Harold was doing was, since this was an existing lot, he was only basing it on the other acreage. But since this is going to be included as part of the open space development, that's, see, if you take these five acres out, Ron?
Yes.
Then that's probably 48, 40%, right? Because this is a preexist, this is an existing lot.
The whole thing's an existing lot.
Well, but this is an existing house, an existing taxable lot.
Does that become part of the open space, because it still has that frontage?
It would become part of the open space development plan, because this one actually loses its frontage.
So again, the other-
Yeah, Lot 4 is the only one that has-
I think that ought to be 13.28.
Yeah, so I think that's probably what they did. So, yeah, because right now, Lot 4 is the only one that'll have 200 feet of road frontage on Old Stage Road. So this has to become part of, I guess technically, that one doesn't have to be part of-
Yeah, Lot 4 doesn't have to be part of it.
Lot 4 is not part of the open space development plan. The open space development plan are these four.
Oh, so then if you do these-
Yeah, then that, that-
Then that percentage is right, yeah.
Then that percentage is right.
200.
Because he has, this has 200 feet of frontage, so that's-
They should maybe distinguish it as such by calling it Lot A, and the other ones like-
One, two, three, four.
One B, two B, three B.
Right. Yeah, so it's clear that Lot 4 is really technically not part of, because it can have a driveway off of Old Stage Road and have the 200 feet of frontage. So that's probably, that's probably how they came up with that. So that's actually a tad more than the 40% required.
That should make sense, because I remember Bill talking about the 40%.
Mm-hmm. So, so the easement is, it shouldn't be too much of a challenge. I mean, it's, there's pretty standard easement language, and then it, and it has to, it just has to, now, again, the homeowners or an individual, you could continue to retain the ownership of that, but there's an easement to the town which prevents any future development of that.
Okay.
Does the homeowners association have to be formed before we can vote on it? Some kind of legal document that forms it?
Well, we have that common driveway bylaw, right, that was introduced last town meeting.
But don't we have to get the blessing of the fire department and all that other stuff?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Before we can vote on it, we're, you've got a lot of blessings to go through.
Just giving our guidance now.
Yeah.
Yeah, how to proceed, that's what I like, so.
Yeah, and there is, there was something in here that in particular, I remember Bill talking about, where it talked about the road.
And the storm, and the stormwater management.
And allowing for a waiver, a waiver as needed. And I, and I think that's where we started to get into the discussion about addressing, addressing it with the fire department.
Okay.
Wouldn't your first blush be with the fire department to get that hurdle done with? Because that's going to be one of the big stumbling blocks, right?
Mm-hmm.
That's where I would say to go first, you know? And then you can click them other ones off as you go, you know? Once they give you the blessing, then the whole deal goes away, you know?
So what tool do we have to ensure that when it goes to, like, if this gets approved and you lots go to market and get real estate, you know, a real estate agent to sell them? How does the, the people who buy the lot know that they have to join the homeowners association?
It'd be a stipulation in the contract.
Yeah, it'd be a stipulation in the contract for sure.
Be redone.
Yeah.
Just like when you buy like a subdivision or anything.
Are you planning on selling them, Jeanie, or are you planning on just building one more and your daughter live up in the big house?
I'm planning on building something smaller.
Yeah.
And then maybe down the road, my future son-in-law, they may want to build something on one of the other lots, but-
So you want to market the big house at one point?
I'm going to sell the big house, probably in next, not till next spring.
So in order for you to-
I have to be able to get something for myself.
Yeah, you gotta get all that paperwork done before, yeah, before you can-
Right, so in order for you to sell the building lot and have a house of your own, you have to do something like this, otherwise you're just selling the big building, the big house.
Right, right.
Yep.
Yeah, you're maybe selling one, the whole thing, like you bought it.
Yeah, no, that's not the intention.
No, I knew that, but it was, yeah.
I'd kind of like to stay in Hatfield, and since I have the land, I'd like to be able to do something.
Right, you're half the way there, right?
So that's, that seems to be the, it seems like-
It's pretty much-
We had those two things where, where at the, at the sort of, the last time we saw Bill was the, the issue of just how you were going to address holding the open space and who was going to hold it, and the easement associated with it, and then the road.
Okay, all right, so I'll make an appointment to speak with the fire department to get their input, and then the open space committee?
You could talk to them, I mean, you could, you could even, if you wanted to, get in touch with me. This is what I do as a day job.
Oh, okay, and I'm sorry, you're Paul.
Bob Wagner, yeah. I live on Lindsay Road.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
But make sure when you talk with gone, okay?
With who?
Steven Gone.
Steven Gone, the new fire chief, okay?
He might have something in-
Make sure that you explain to him that that was under Bill Belden's regime, that they did that whole test, you know, to work to make sure they could get turned around and all this other stuff. So just remind Stevie that that was under Bill Belden's. And Bill Belden may have some answers for you as to how to proceed.
Okay, I know, I'm understanding, so I'll just talk to them.
Yeah, he might, he might be able to help you proceed on that, you know?
Okay.
All right, good.
All right, good, all right, take care.
You're welcome. Good seeing you, Jeanie.
Thank you.
Is Jay Niles here?
Yeah.
Can you ask these guys to sign this?
Mm-hmm.
Could you sign that and then pass it around?
Pass it around.
We're going to pass around a sign up sheet for those that haven't just checked in, please. Mr. Niles, you had a, you had a question in public forum?
Yes, he told me to-
Yeah, come on up.
Sure.
You're next up.
Okay, yeah, I called to try to get information about, I actually sent an email to try to get information about, I guess, a proposal going on, a to a butter of mine on Scotland Road regarding turning a single family into apparently multi-families and possible renting out. I'm hearing rumors about this, and there was an informal meeting. So I'm just trying to get some information about what it is, where it is in process, and what are the special permits or, you know, the setbacks that are kind of being considered for a special permit.
We already voted on that, right?
No, we haven't, because she hasn't come in with a final plan. She's come in to talk to us.
There is a property owner on Scotland Road that came to us, just like this meeting, informally, and said, "I'm interested in buying or converting the single-family home into a two-family home." Anything over two-family, the whole property would have to be, would have to install a sprinkler system under the current building codes, which is probably cost prohibitive, unless they have tons of money, I guess, I don't know. So in order to have two houses on one lot, they, that, what they want to do is join that garage to the house. They would have to connect them in some way, shape, or form. Also, to have that particular piece of property has to have, what, 65,000 square feet of available land. And we did see a document where the homeowner had purchased some additional property so that-
Correct.
There is 65,000 square feet. Two-family homes are allowed under our current zoning law in the town of Hatfield, but we have not seen a formal request.
Are there setbacks for that type of conversion? So there's, I thought it was a 35-foot setback from the edge of the property, from where the buildings are to be located. But again, if you're saying that there hasn't been anything formally introduced-
We have not received an application from the homeowner.
And if I understand our process correctly, there'll be a butters notices, so this one-
Yeah, they have to send out notices to a butters, there'll be a, it'll be a public hearing, there'll be a notice in the newspaper.
Okay.
Probably two notices in the paper. We have to notice 30, what, 30 days in advance.
Mm-hmm.
And if one of the ones we'd be questioning is the setbacks, don't-
The setbacks are the same for two-family or a single-family in outlying residential, rural residential, town center, town center business.
So conversions.
So the house was built there with, I mean, it's 200 feet of frontage. That's rural residential probably there.
But we'd be converting a garage into an apartment.
Well, that'd be turning that into a two-family, yeah, that would be the, what, turn it into a two-family dwelling.
But if does the garage, if you were to do that, I thought, or at least some of us are thinking, the garage has to be 35 feet off because it wasn't built as a, as an apartment when the garage was-
Well, so, yeah, so the setback for a two-family dwelling, which would include that now, are 200 feet of frontage, 35 feet minimum yard in the front, 15 feet side yard.
That garage still should be 35 feet.
And 30 feet rear.
You'd have to look. I thought it was 35 foot to the butter on the right.
So the garage is-
15 to the butter on the right.
15 to the side.
15 on the sides, 35 and 35 on the front and back.
No, actually, only 30 on the back.
30 on the back.
Yeah. So the 30, so the 35 in that garage is setback, the house is closer to the road, Scotland Road in the garage.
Yeah, but he's talking about the other road.
And then-
Talking about the other road.
On Sunset, yeah.
The other road on Sunset, we thought, because the garage is built, I believe, we thought the setback was garage shed 15 feet. Apartment was 35 on the outside, which is near our home on a butter on the outside.
No, it's two-family dwelling is 200 feet.
The garage building would have been the same.
35, 15, and 30.
But basically, there's been no plans submitted, so we're not near that stage yet. We'll be notified, all the neighbors can come in, we can all review it, okay?
Yeah, there was a neighbor here at the last hearing, actually.
And that's where word's starting to get out, and we weren't understanding the informality, but now I get, they came and just presented it like this, so.
Yeah, they came in with some sketch drawings.
But there was no mention of any multi-family other than two.
Yeah.
A multi-family is three to six.
There was only two. There wasn't any sorts, grand, grandiose family.
Okay, once again, we're hearing other, you know, but none of this stuff's official, that's why I want to make sure that's being proposed, so.
Yeah, nothing's done.
Okay, that's good.
And anything over two, if it goes to three, it has to be, have a sprinkler system.
Okay, okay, all right, thanks.
Okay. Has everybody signed the sign-in sheet, please? Can you guys get ready, be ready to start the, yeah, the public, the public hearing? The public hearing? Good evening, this is continuing the Town of Hatfield Planning Board for April 12th at Memorial Town Hall. For those of you that have not, we introduced the members, Paul Lavie, Bob Wagner, Paul Dostal, and Ron Sassy. Mr. Bartlett is not here, I'm the acting chairman tonight, my name is Paul Dostal. Our posted business is to take up a zone map hearing at 6:30 regarding a piece of property on Straits Road. Here's the notice that was in the newspaper. The Planning Board for the Town of Hatfield will conduct a public hearing pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 48, on Tuesday, April 12th, 2016, at 6:30 PM, Memorial Town Hall, 59 Main Street, Hatfield, Mass. Consider amending the zoning map of the Town of Hatfield, Map 206, a portion of parcels 109 and 110, located on Straits Road, from the current rural residential zone to light industrial zone being less than five acres. Proposed amendment to the zoning map of the Town of Hatfield indicating the above changes on the file in the office of the town clerk, available for public inspection during the town clerk's regular business hours. So with that, is the property owner here?
No, he's not.
He's not here?
No.
Are you, you're representing the property owner?
I suppose, yes.
Okay, why don't you come up and explain to us what is going to take place, or what you're looking for?
I'm looking to move my business where I'm at, on West Street in Hatfield now, corn roofing, which is owned right now, section 5.27, commercial warehousing, and move it to Straits Road, and continue to run the business the way, and now it's just, trucks in in the morning, my guys come meet there, and then we head out from there. And that's about it.
Okay, so what's changed from the last time you were here? Because when we talked, the issue about road frontage was...
Yeah, well, they have, I don't know if you guys got that...
Well, it looks like, yeah, it looks like it's on this, on the smaller one.
Yeah, we got it. It's not on, it's not on, it's not on this piece of paper. Why don't you, Ron?
Yeah, it is, it's up here on this jog here, comes out.
Oh, okay, this is it, I'm sorry.
He's got his 200 there, and then it comes down.
Yeah. There's 13 and 13, so that's...
13 and 187 is the 200.
200.
Yeah, well, I brought the other ones down with the Mylar today, so that shows all the fancy writing and whatnot that I don't know about, but, so yeah, nothing is, I'm not sure the last time that we had talked.
Yeah.
But, so this is what they had come up with for an area.
For a reconfigured lot?
Yeah.
To give you the necessary road frontage.
Yeah, the necessary frontage here, and then he still owns this a little over 11 acres here, which is to remain rural residential, agricultural.
And then you still have a access?
Yeah, which is the access that I would like to continue using.
20 feet wide easement. How much traffic per day, roughly? Did you see that today?
Maybe 10 trucks in and out all day. Most likely less than a farmer would use.
So you have 10 employees?
I don't know, I have, I have five, five to six employees, and then, I'm just saying, say, one in the morning, a couple in the morning, I have three trucks, so they go out, they're gone all day at the job, they come back, so three trucks might go out and in.
Okay.
You know, and I might be in the...
Do we have, do we have anybody else here that would like to speak in favor of the project, or in favor of the rezoning?
I would be in favor of that, Kyle Scott, Building Inspector, zoning code enforcement officer, think it'd be a good use for the property, so, I'd be in favor of that.
Anyone else? Mr. Segrodne?
I don't want to get a mystery yet. I've known, I've known Phil quite some time, and as you can see, it's hard to believe he's a roofer, because he's pretty neat and clean, you know what I mean?
He's got depth out for this, you know?
He's a great businessman, he's clean-cut, he's respectful, I think it's a great asset to the community to have a business like that there. I really think it's time in this town that we stop pushing business out of here. We need to start generating money and making money rather than spending it and losing it.
Okay.
You know, I don't think there'll be any problems with the neighbors, you know?
Okay.
I mean, it's one of them things, what are you going to do with that property?
I don't know, I don't know what I'm going to do, I don't own it, I don't care what...
The town could own it.
What I'm saying is, is it's kind of a white elephant, the way it's left right now. No bank is giving a farmer the loan to go in there and buy that property.
Well, I don't know.
You haven't dealt with a farm banker lately. Well, that's...
Your two cents?
I really, I really think that you guys should take into serious consideration, I think it would benefit of Phil and the town and everybody else.
Okay, all right. You guys got any questions for any of, nope?
Was there anyone?
Yeah, yeah, I'm going to ask her, those, anybody here that's opposed to the zoning change, proposed zoning change?
Opposed. Let me introduce myself, my name is Lisa Berkman, and I'm your newest member of the Zoning Board of Appeals, and a relatively new member in Hatfield, and I did serve on Williamsburg Zoning Board of Appeals for over 12 years, and was a rotating chair many times. It is with sadness that I bring this news to you, but for your reference, Planning Board, you need to look at Section 4 of Chapter 48, which is the state law, and it says, "Any zoning ordinance or bylaw which divides cities and towns into districts shall be uniform within the district for each class or kind of structures or uses permitted." In our common everyday argot, we call that spot zoning, and this application by a wonderful young man who has a lovely future ahead of him, the state law prohibits the dividing into small patches for other uses. The exceptions to this uniform rule is for education and religion, those are the only two exceptions for the uniform district, and this has to be considered so that it goes, no, does not leave this room in any active form, because you will be in violation of the state law. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I'm not against or for, I just have questions or things to bring up.
Go ahead, please state your name for the record.
Jamie Lauren, I live at 172 North Hatfield Road, and I'm not positive which parcel of land we're talking about, if it's the Rusko Onion Building there, and all that.
Yeah.
So you'd be using the easement through my property?
You want to see this, Jamie, you can take a look at it right here. You live in the little red house next to the truck.
Yeah, so, yeah, this is your house here, so it would be...
But you'd be using this?
Yes, yeah.
This is a newer plan. I see that. He's, he's given us the old copy, and this is a newer plan, there's a lot more detail.
Yeah, yeah.
In fact, they're, they're also providing a combination now of these two lots into now parcel two.
So he is breaking off this section here, which would be, I'd be buying that, and then he'd be keeping this for agricultural.
Okay, I guess my, my question, concern is, I'm really happy that it's a, that type of business, I can certainly live with that, but once you change it and say he sells it, it becomes, you know, a parking lot for CNS refrigeration trucks that run all night. We've lived in that kind of situation before, where a vacant lot got turned into a zidrona dairy, and it would just change the whole character, you know, of our property because it was constant buzzing, and I'm just worried that, like I said, if he stays there as long as I live, that'd be great, but what are, what is light industrial, what can that open up?
Well, it opens up a...
It opens up, if you look at our use table, our use table in the zoning bylaws allows, provides what is allowed within each of the different zoning districts, either by right or by special permit or site plan review. So that's something that you could review, but just looking at it really quickly, residential trailer or mobile home, a lot of them are site plan review, schools and churches, childcare center, municipal park, government building, municipal buildings, public library, museum...
You could have a public utility...
All types of agricultural.
Sewerage treatment plant.
I'd live next to those people.
Convenience stores.
Gee, you've had some bum luck, you live next to...
I thought I was all set.
You could have a commercial dog kennel, you could have a commercial kennel there, you listen to barking dogs all day.
I mean, this, this is what I plan on doing for the rest of my life, I don't really have a... And you're younger than me, so... I'm 22, so I'm, I probably have to roof for the next 30 years, this is something I plan on buying and staying for a long time.
Well, to the, to the, to the project or that they're interested in, there's manufacturing of processing of food products, of metal products, machine shop, blacksmith shop, for example, general manufacturing in enclosed structures, research office and development activities, assembly and packaging. So you're not going to get heavy industry, millwork, cabinetry, commercial storage facilities, construction industry supplier, including storage and material equipment, so you're, yeah, so you're not going to get heavy industry in there, but off-street parking and loading, so...
Is that the only zoning choice he has, is light industrial? There's no other...
Well, his...
That's what I'm under now.
Yeah, he's, where's the construction, agriculture?
He's actually not doing anything there, other than maybe fabricating drip edges and things like that with the brand, but there's no construction going on there.
He would be under the table of use for wholesale transportation, industrial use is 5.27, construction industry and suppliers, including open storage of materials and equipment, is allowed, that would be his category. And he would have to apply for a, a special permit with a site plan approval, so that means he would have to, would have to, if, if, if he purchased the property and the sale went through and he buys the property, and then, oh no, I'm sorry, let me back up, if, if it was, if the zone was changed, if it was already light industrial, just say it was zone industrial, and he says, "I want to, I want to go in there," then he would have to apply for a special permit, and to start his business. An example is we're out on Route 5, where the, I don't know if you know where Ozley Construction was, where Brendan Kelly Trucking was there.
Yeah.
Now, that property was sold to Alternative Recycling, it's zone industrial, he had to come and apply for a special permit for a trucking company to go in there.
And that's the same property?
Yeah, I know, that's where you guys are.
So, you know, if a piece of property is zoned industrial or light industrial, they have to come and apply for a...
And so they apply for a permit, and if you, whoever is judging that, they can say, "No, we're not giving you a permit to run a..."
Right, right, they can say yes, they can say no, they can say yes with restrictions.
Yeah, okay.
For example, maybe he has to put some screening up, maybe he can't operate between, maybe can only operate between the hours of 8 o'clock in the morning and 5 o'clock in the afternoon, or something like that, you know, no Saturdays and Sundays, just whatever. And there's been numerous cases in town where, for example, somebody had an auto repair shop on Lindsay Road, and we put restrictions on when they can operate and when they can't operate, those kinds of things, so...
Okay, thank you. If I could just speak to the zoning, spot zoning, and my belief is that it's 170 feet away from industrial zoning right now, so that doesn't qualify as spot zoning.
Okay, yes?
I totally agree with Mr. Andrew Kedis that that doesn't fit spot zoning. You have an industrial zone in close proximity, there's non-conforming all over that road, I believe it's Mike Bartlett owns a piece where there's wire and cable operation out of there, so that wouldn't typically fit a spot zone. My, my opinion of spot zoning is just rezoning that parcel due to the fact it's one, 173 feet away, that is industrial, that wouldn't be considered spot zoning. Spot zoning would be if you had nothing of that nature on that road, you singled out, "I'm going to give Phil Andrew Kedis an industrial zone in the middle of no other like uses."
What's the limit? Is there a radius or a distance that creates a...
Well, I mean, I do a lot of zoning, and it appears the definition of spot zoning came up when you would single out an entirely different zone, say if it was totally residential, and you created one lot here, you know, another lot in another neighborhood, but when you have similar uses along the same road, especially, you're talking 173 feet away, in this case, I point that out due to the sheer closeness of it, you know?
Yeah, 173 feet away is over 60 acres of industrial zone.
Is, can you point to that on the plan? Is it land north of Regish?
It's, yes, it's, so, yeah, I can show you on the...
They don't have our big zoning map.
What's that?
Not, not, I'm just, we use, we have that bigger zoning map.
Yeah, so, well, this is what he previously wanted to do, but that's not the acres that we'll be doing, I had another one here somewhere.
Well, that's okay, that gives us a locus of where the other, where the industrial zone is.
So this is, Regish is here, so now we've, you know, this is the 173 feet, which is right, you know, right here.
So is there anything, there's nothing on here?
Yeah, all that PAR, P-A-R is all there.
Well, they're just renting the...
Yeah, they're renting it.
They're renting...
There is the Regish parcel from here, because that's in the APR program.
That's right here.
Right here.
Right there, okay.
Mine is this little corner.
In fact, I think this corner he bought from Regish, didn't he?
Yeah, he did, that was the lot, that was the lot that was carved out of his property when he subdivided it.
Right.
Yeah, and so then the industrial zone is, is here, so it's just north of Regish.
Yeah.
So, so I think, to a couple of the issues that have been raised, Mr. Lauren raised one, and that is the fact that if it, if it is zoned to light industrial, your use may be perfectly compatible with the neighbors and with, with the area, but it also means that, that any other allowed use under light industrial could go in there at some time after you decide to move or sell or whatever, I mean, it's, it's not just a zone for you, it's a zone for that property, whatever happens there into the future.
Contingent upon approval of the town.
That's right, right, but you're always, got yourself opened up to a lawsuit if you reject what somebody wants to put in there, that's, you know, presumably even with site plan approval allowed or review in a, in a light industrial zone. The only other thing that I, gives me pause about this, and of course, this would have to go to town meeting, do you have a comment on that?
I wanted to speak, if I could, I didn't know if you had closed public session.
No, we haven't closed, no, we're still open.
Okay.
Is that, I mean, we have a lot of buildings like this all over Hatfield, you know, that are agricultural in rural residential zones, in the town center and town business, you know, if somebody decides that they don't want to use that building anymore and they have access to road frontage, we could be getting requests like this for years to come, and those would then be spot zoning around, you know, Main Street or whatever, there's a lot of agricultural structures and buildings that could easily be repurposed for any use on Main Street and up and down Prospect, or Prospect and Chestnut and along Elm Street, so that just gives me pause that we could have a situation where, you know, someone comes in and says, "Well, you let those guys do it out on Straits Road, and I've got 200 feet of frontage, I want to, you know, have a, have a spaghetti lot like this and have it rezoned light industrial."
But that would clearly be spot zoning at that point, where this is, I think, has a...
Well, we have some traditional old, you know, I mean, anybody near Helena may argue that that's an industrial zone, even though it's pretty residential, you know, but anyway, it's, that's just a concern I have, not so much about this specific property, but just the precedent that it sends, it sets, because...
Excuse me, Bob?
Yeah.
There is no precedent in zoning, it's a case by case by case, patient.
Yeah, I know, but attorneys, but, but attorneys...
If you just simply say no, then it's kind of, if something against, you know, common sense, you simply say no, it is... It is, there is no precedence setting in zoning.
Well, but, yeah, that, that may be your opinion and that might, might be true, but it's not going to stop an attorney from arguing that.
I guess you could say it sets a precedence for this property, not necessarily for all zone changes.
Or perhaps the road, but not, not as a, as a rule in general. There is zoning, the first thing you read in any zoning book is it's a case by case. And even with variances, it's, that, that is true. It is not a general, you're setting a guidebook or rules due to what case.
Well, with that being said, I mean, you do then have the issue of this being the camel's nose under the tent in that, okay, so this becomes light industrial, it's 170 feet away from an industrial zone. So then the neighbors come in and say, well, we want to get re-zoned light industrial because that is, and we're only 170 feet away from an industrial zone. So it starts to cascade down Straits Road. But.
There's, there's one parcel, that particular parcel, 173 feet. But if you go across the street and down the street, I don't know how many, there's a, a much larger area that is agricultural and rural residential, and it's been that way since 1670. So, in my opinion, the, the, what Mr. Wagner was talking about in regards to spot zoning, we, we changed that and other people come along and say, well, you did it for them? Why can't, why can't I get it on Main Street or Elm Street or some other street? So.
Goes beyond the simple realm of common sense at that point.
This gentleman had a comment.
Yeah, I just want, my name is Richard Slawski. I own the property of 160 North Hatfield Road and it goes from North Hatfield Road all the way to Straits Road. I'm not arguing for it or against it, but I have some concerns, some of which have already been expressed as to rezoning this piece of property. I have not, I don't know this gentleman, I'm sure he's a good businessman. My first concern is this access to this property for commer, for light industrial will be on North Hatfield Road. That will be the access, correct?
Well, well, you do, there is an access there, yes.
Yeah, so how will you be accessing the property through Straits Road or North Hatfield Road?
No, I would like to use the North Hatfield.
Okay, so the access to this property, we through North Hatfield Road and not Straits Road. I think that's important because the piece will be cut off and the piece that abuts Straits Road will still be agricultural rural, is that correct?
Well, no, it'll be light, if this were to go through, it'd be light industrial from the back of the Lawrence property all the way to Straits Road.
Really, so that whole piece of property?
Because that's the only way, it's the only way that he can get the necessary road.
Look at his frontage on Straits.
There's the map.
Here, you want to see the parcel?
So, so in other words, the property will go all the way to Straits Road.
Here's the 200 feet of frontage and it comes down here.
All the way down here, but this is where you would have your building.
And then here.
I hope to have farm by Mr. Zabronik or I.
Okay, I have no problem there, there's, where's the onion shed?
Right here, it's here.
That's the onion shed?
Yeah. Yeah. And this is where I'd be running my, my business out, there's a field services is renting these buildings which would remain. And then, yeah.
And then here's the easement.
This is how I would come out.
Okay, you like, well, my, my first concern is this easement is 20 feet or 24 feet?
20.
20 feet.
20 feet where your trucks capable handle?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah?
Yeah, we have pickup trucks.
Okay, all right, I thought these were going to be big. I thought it was bigger trucks, you know what I'm trying to say, like semi 16 feet? Okay, that's what I was wondering about, okay. So if this is all going to be zoned, this is going to, my second concern is exactly what some people have brought up. If I own this property and it's 170 feet away from something you're saying like industrial, why can't I make my property light industrial too? Or why can't, wasn't it do a hiss? What happens is you have a cascading effect, it's sort of like a virus. You introduce it on this piece of property, the next abuser says, well, you did it for them even though I was zoning. If it's a master plan, that's one thing, but here you're doing piece, piecement, that's my concern. So if this piece goes light industrial, then this piece can go light industrial because if I was the, if I was the owner, I would argue in front of you, well, what's good for him is good for me. And then, and it just cascades, that's why you have master plans. That's why people sit down and they say, okay, this is going to be our industrial park, this is our industrial, this is going to be rural agricultural. And so, I mean, I'm not opposed to this, I'm just concerned about what this introduces in that area, that's all. And like someone said, since, since there were Indians running around here, this has all been agricultural. But that doesn't mean it has to stay that way, but you know the song, right? It put in a parking lot, okay? And when you put in a parking lot, you can't grow corn, you can't grow things, okay? So, so, and, and those are just concerns, I'm not against it or for it because these buildings, if there's a legitimate use, if you don't try to, you're a businessman and you leave it, we're all stewards. You leave it in the same way you found it or better, then that's good. But what I'm wondering is, God forbid, these things happen, you go out of business in five years and someone buys it and they want a junkie out there, is that permitted on light industrial? No. Okay, I don't know, I just threw it out there, you know what I'm trying to say?
The piece of property also buying is not, it's not, it's not farmable anyway because it is not.
At one time it was.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
That's what I'm trying to say, at one time it was, then they built a parking lot. And, and so I'm not, I'm not arguing against it or for it, I'm just wondering about what this introduces there in that area. Because if you put it in light industrial, and I know this gentleman.
Well, that's the gentleman who I'm buying it from.
I understand, I was in the, in the zoning when he wanted to have permitted, something that was not permitted there, which I was surprised it didn't come back together, he's on.
He's selling, he would like to sell this also.
Yes, I know that, I know that. But anyways, those are my, 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 I mean, those are just concerns, they're not ye or me, they're just, I'm just concerned.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions for you, so if you were to come in for, just like the, the recycling folks had to come in for a new site plan approval out there on the property, you come in, there'll probably be some restrictions or limits on the amount of vehicle traffic that you're going to be allowed to have in and out of there out onto North Hatfield Road. I mean, it's, that's, that's a eased area, right? It's not, it's a, I mean, it's really not the legal frontage, the legal frontage is out on Straits Road. And so, you know, just as we've required setbacks and no air brakes, I know you probably don't have vehicles that require that or anything like that, are, are you in a position, and then there's two other tenants back there, I mean, maybe I should ask the Lawrence, what's the traffic like now going in and out of there?
Very light.
Very light, well, the, the farm had huge machinery going in and out of there and tractor trailers, so, you know, pickup trucks are, are probably a welcome change to them. And he's not probably going to do a crow cannon.
But the field services, they're operating out of there now, are they considered light industrial? I don't know what field services is, I just.
They're unfallible or agricultural because they, they service fields.
They're custom, custom farm, custom farmers?
What do they do, I don't really.
Custom application.
Okay. Well, you've been on the board longer than I, I mean, and, and longer than the other three of us. Bob had some positions about things like this and going before town meeting.
I consider it to be spot zoning and that's the process of singling out a, a small parcel of land for a use classified totally different from that of the surrounding area for the benefit of the owner of such property and possibly the detriment of other owners, the surrounding owners, Mr. I'm sorry.
Slawski.
Slawski. Possibly to the Lawrence because they're zoned residential. So that's, that's a concern that bothers me. And it's, it's also, we get into spot zoning and it's, it's the antithesis of our, of having a planning board and having the land zoned for its intended use. When the master plan was taken up, what, 20 years ago roughly, almost 20 years ago or some, 15 or 20 years ago? The committee went to all the property owners, I know this is 20 years, but they surveyed all these landowners up there and they had the opportunity to re, rezone their property to industrial or light industrial. And it was almost like getting a free pass as, as well as other landowners within the town. And they expressed their, their desire to keep it residential agricultural. So those, those are my thoughts, my concerns.
Except they didn't because 60 acres of it is non-industrial.
No, that was zoned, that was, that area was zoned, the, I was on the master plan committee and we were looking at that whole area as being an area that might actually be more broadly zoned for light industrial and industrial. And on one of the original maps, those were all identified as sort of a light industrial zone and the landowners came in and said, no, we don't want to, we want to have it stay ag residential. And, and petitioned in effect, the master plan came to a public hearings and said, no, we, we want that changed. We don't want, this was just a proposal at the time and it all got pulled back. Because there was some thought because of its proximity to North Hatfield Road and to the railroad tracks and to Route 5, that that would be an area that would be appropriate for more commercial light industrial development. So, and they, they actually were pretty adamant about not wanting to see a change from what it was at the time. Now, that was 15, 16 years ago. But that to the point that was made earlier, that was then the genesis of our master plan, which is what is still in place now, which is why the zoning districts are, are where they are. But help me out here, how does this, this still would have to be voted on at town meeting, right?
Yeah, we can't, we can't automatically change the zoning by a vote tonight. We would have to, one, recommend that this request, we could, we could either recommend that the request go forward to town meeting or not go forward to town meeting and let the town vote on a zoning change. That's been our, the planning board's history in the past is that we don't, we don't make that determination. It's the, the voters in the town of Hatfield would be making the change. Yes?
May I make a recommendation?
Yes.
Since I cited section four which prohibits the, the parcel under consideration, I suggest that you call town council and perhaps get an in-depth report of how the courts have looked at spot zoning before you make any recommendation to go forward.
That's something to think about. Any other comments or questions regarding for or against this particular request?
The only thing I, I say is to the gentleman's point, I think was.
Mr. Bob Wagner.
Mr. Wagner, five years ago, the town voted down changing this area, I think, no, was it five or six years ago? Long before that, okay.
Yeah, it was 15 or 16.
Let's put it this way, the people that owned the property 20 years ago still own the property today?
They didn't vote, they didn't vote down, they were, they were offered the opportunity, they said, we're going out to, to rezone, to do the master plan.
Right, and one of the original drawings of the master plan had this area of reason.
The town voted, voted to keep it rural agricultural?
No, no, the, the residents had the opportunity to say, would you like to, my understanding, would you like to have your land re-zoned?
I was there for that, but it was also a proposal in, in front of the town to put a road through there so we could access the parcels easier, that was voted down by the town.
I don't remember.
Well, that may, that may be true too, I, but I, I'm referring to when we were doing the master planning.
No, it's, when I know the road, this is right through my property.
Mr. Pachek, did you, you had your hand up before, did you want to speak?
Uh, yeah, well, yes, I would, based on a few facts. I would recommend that the planning board not support this. One being that under our master plan and we have designated certain areas that are zoned for certain purposes. Secondly, I think Lissa had cited a master general law that we, not in official capacity, but in unofficial capacity, the members of the ZBA would, would agree that the master general law should offer protection against this kind of rezoning, this spot, spot zoning. So. I, I didn't, the rest of it's been said already, so, those would be my comments.
Okay.
Can I, I guess I'm not sure, maybe, Michael, you know, just what the, what the, what the sequence of events here. There's a, there, there is a warrant article being proposed that is, is it before the select board? And they're just wanting, and we're just providing our input and recommendations or what, where does it stand in terms of moving?
We could, there's, I think, we could move this forward to be put on the warrant with or without a recommendation or approving, with a recommendation by the planning board that this zoning change take place or with a recommendation that it not, you know, not recommended by the planning board or recommended by the planning board. Or we can say, no, we don't want to, we don't want it to go forward to the, to the town warrant.
And that's the, and so if we were to vote on, say, that third choice, it would not, is there, is there another way that it can go on the warrant? Is the select board looking at this separately from us or is there a petition or how does it, how does that work?
Not sure. I'm not sure, they, they could, they could, I believe, bring it up on the town floor as a, as a new article.
I think they would need to have it as a petition, have to have a certain number of signatures.
I think you're asking to go as a petition as well.
As a petition, yeah.
Unless this light board brought it forward as a warrant article, I assume. I, I don't have all the details for that.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not.
I, and can I, I mean, I understand an opportunity for people to vote on it at town floor, but it just seems like within the system that we're working under that we have already voted at town meeting through the years that it's, it, it just seems kind of odd that we would, that it would go forward again for essentially what amounts to a legal spot zoning.
Well, I, I agree to some point, but I think that a citizen or the, or a property owner has the right to, to bring it up, you know, even though it was not approved, they can, they can bring it up next year. They can bring it up every year until, you know, they get sick of bringing it up. You know, they go, well, hey, you know, I'm not going to win or I'm going to get it. You know, because you have a different select board, you've made, the faces on the various boards may change, the, the population of the town may change. Obviously, we don't have as many farmers here as we used to have, that, that sort of thing. But I, I don't think that just because it didn't pass before doesn't mean it's going to pass again.
Well, yeah, those are all valid points, Paul, I just, again, you know, we're, we're working under a system that we have voted in and this to me just seems like it's, it's outside that system. At the same time, I can understand if people do have property and want to attempt to have it rezoned, I, I guess town, town floor would be the place to do it.
Yeah. Yeah, Ms. Berkman. Yeah, Ms. Berkman.
What is confusing me is, in my knowledge of zoning and land use, state law trumps local. And Section 4 just says, "Uniformity, end of it." And how this application from this, this young man even got as far as this hearing is kind of surprising to me, that somewhere along the way in the application phase, it should be so sorry.
Well, I think that that's the, I think that's the, the sort of phase we're in right now. I mean, anybody can ask and come in, we had before you arrived, there were people here asking on an informal basis about some issues regarding, you know, projects that they might want to bring forward. The, I missed the last meeting, but the previous meeting prior to that, when this gentleman came in, he was asking us about it relative to road frontage. And, you know, that's when we made it clear that there wasn't enough road frontage and so they came back with this new design. I'm going to say that for me, this is a really, this is a really hard one because if you think about it in an isolated fashion, you know, these buildings are there, they're currently not being used, there's an individual who is suggesting a really good use for the buildings, even the previous owner had some suggestions of uses for those buildings, but they don't comply with current zoning. The property probably should never have been purchased with the idea that they could be used for commercial business because that wasn't allowed under the current zoning. And so while everything we've heard today about your business, about the way you handle your business, about the number of vehicles you may have, all may sound like, well, gee, this will be a rather low-impact use in the neighborhood, the fact is, is that it is rezoning it to light industrial. And while there's 100 and, you know, an industrial zone 170 feet away, there's a rural residential zone immediately adjacent to it. And so, and as I stated earlier, it, while it may be on a case-by-case basis, you're still setting up additional arguments down the road, as Mr. Slusnik said, you know, if this person could do it, why can't the next person do it, and why can't the next person do it? And that begins to undermine the master plan and those zoning districts that we set up as a result of that master plan. So that's the larger questions that I see the planning board addressing, needing to consider, as opposed to this isolated incident of this particular property and whether it's a good or bad business. It's good to have it on the tax rolls, good to have that kind of employment. We have to think about it from the bigger perspective.
Are we leaning towards bringing this to town meeting?
Any other comments? Because what I'd like to do is close the public hearing and then have a discussion amongst ourselves.
I'll make the motion to close the public hearing.
Second?
Second, the motion to close the public hearing.
Okay, all those in favor of closing the public hearing?
Aye.
Aye.
My thoughts are that based upon, it could be in violation of the law, master general law, Section 4 regarding-
What's our timeframe? Do we have enough time to get, to get all this information together? I mean, is this trying to be ramrodded in, I mean, or is it, we got time to get it?
There won't be enough time to get this to the-
Pardon me?
There won't be enough time.
There won't be enough time. It's either go or no-go, in your mind, Tim?
That's what I hear from Wilma, that if this doesn't go now, then, and then you'll have to deal with Krista Ball and that could be-
It'll have to be-
But that you can't be, that's, 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 that's an odd boss name.
You can't, can we table this for a month until we talk to town council?
Well, then it's done. It's over. Because it won't get to-
That's why I'm buying the property.
Won't make it to town meeting.
We can't do the zone change anyway.
No, I completely understand.
Oh, I see, to get it on the warrant.
I just want this to get to the warrant. But my understanding with this meeting was just to get it on the warrant, not that we were changing zoning or anything like that.
I understand.
But that's a decision we have to make. And whether we want it to go to the town warrant, but I'm also concerned about this board in violation of Massachusetts general law.
Well, that was my question, how much time did we have? You know, if we've got time enough to get to-
We've got 30 days.
No, I know, time enough to get to the town council and all this, and get back, then that's okay. But if we don't, I say we don't, and you're just going to have to wait, you know, until we can get to that.
So by putting it on the warrant, that's not breaking the law, correct? You still have your 30 days to figure, you still have 30 days to figure this out.
I don't know about that. I don't know, I'm not familiar enough with the law.
Whether we would be a jam on that or not.
I mean, because you're just putting it to a town vote, it's not like you're, you're saying, yes, we're changing the zoning.
Another follow-through. You're closed, but you're still discussing that.
Yeah.
One of the possible, possible scenario is when you do a zoning change with the town, at town meeting or whatever city-town process, that automatically goes to the attorney general's office and has to pass all of 48.
Right.
And you've already recognized where the issue is with 48. So, yes, it can go on the town warrant, but before any clearance, it goes to the attorney general and I think they're going to be dead in the water.
Well, it, it's just another question to ask Mr. Brackett. You know, he could, I'm sure he could give you some kind of estimate of whether he would make it through to the attorney general or not.
But would there be enough time then for, to get on the warrant, for us to get that kind of clearance?
If he gives his legal opinion tomorrow, I guess, or within the next-
I can tell you haven't dealt with attorney general.
Pardon me?
I waited for a year.
Yeah, we're not, we're not working with Bill O'Neill anymore. It's a little different than it once was.
No, Mr. Brackett, he, he's pretty responsive. He would, I think he would get back to you fairly quickly.
Especially if you let him know that you had town warrant articles that were involved.
Yeah, Marlene could run down.
Yeah.
Get your parents for you.
Well, so, so here's the other thing. I mean, the master plan is a creature of the community. While there's a number of individuals that are more involved than others in putting that together, it goes before a public hearing, it's voted on, it got voted on at least twice at town meeting. So, you know, the voters had a chance to have, take their, have their, let their positions be known. In a case like this, you can similarly let the voters make a decision. It may not pass muster with the AG's office. But I think the voters at town meeting, and some that have actually expressed this to me in, at recent town meetings on issues that come before the planning board or that are planning and zoning-related, want to know how the planning board feels about it, that that informs their, their decision-making. And, you know, we see on the warrant article all the time, you know, a warrant article and it says, "Recommended by the finance committee." And then you'll see warrant articles that are, that say, "Not recommended by the finance committee," but it's still on the warrant article and the people vote on it. They can make a decision one way or the other, but they at least have the additional information of knowing that in this particular case, the finance committee isn't, isn't supportive of it or isn't recommending it, which provides some additional information to folks, whether or not it changes their vote or not, that all comes down to what's said at town meeting. So, I don't know, I think, you know, maybe that we have the other option of, of voting to have this go to town meeting warrant, but without our recommendation.
Can I ask a question? Last, last year when this was voted on to rezonate those parcels, was that with your recommendation or?
We didn't make-
Didn't make any.
We didn't make, it went neutral. It went without, it went neutral.
That could be made again, correct? Made neutral?
It could be made neutral, it could be made without our recommendation, it could be made with our recommendation. I guess it really depends upon the vote of the board.
Yeah.
But that's another option, which then doesn't hold this up. But as you pointed out, we've had more than enough warrant articles get passed and then we hear back from the AG's office that it didn't pass muster. And I know in one case, I wasn't on the planning board at the time, but I know that happened with some kind of zoning decision and it sort of went back to the drawing board.
And the AG's, if the scenario goes that, yes, the voters say, okay, we vote for this little change in zoning, and then it can take four to six months for the AG's office to come back denying it. When you see, you know, all our changes in our zoning, sometimes it's three to six months before voted on, you know, a town meeting, approved by the AG's office, four to six months later.
Yeah, well, that's true with all the warrant articles. I mean, all the warrant, all the warrant articles go to the AG's office to be approved. None of them actually, you know, I think on some of them, they're faster than others, but you're right.
Like, we added some things a couple of years ago to, to update the zoning bylaws. It took a year for them to make a decision and then we could update it. So, you know, I understand that, it's a long process. Okay, well, what do we want to do here?
I- I'd like to make a motion that we send it to town meeting with a neutral, a neutral bias.
Well, my concern is-
We could, we could make it with, with a, you know, caveat that town council look at it as well.
I don't think we'll be able to do that. I don't think we'll have time, really. I mean, it's, this is, it's April 12th.
Yeah.
Town meeting's in a month. They have to get the warrant article out here in the next, like, probably week. It's got to be out two or three weeks before town meeting for people to be able to review it.
Yeah, I don't think Ron means prior. Do you mean prior or after, Ron? That somebody look at it.
I think all, yeah, well, that would probably happen anyway, right?
Yeah. My, my concern is that it's breaking the law. And I wasn't, that's what I would like, I would like to get a readout from the lawyer.
What kind of time have we got before? We got to tell that guy whether he's going on the warrant or not.
I don't know.
All right, Tim.
I don't have a, you know.
What does a petition require in terms of numbers of names? I'm just curious, you know?
Percentage of the voting population? I'd have to look that up.
Yeah. Where is Wilma here?
I don't think it's very many.
No, I don't think it's very many either.
I think, I think it's like 10. I don't think it's many at all.
If the AG has the final say, what is the concern? If it gets voted on and even passes, if it's found to be an illegal act, it's null and void, correct?
Well, could be.
Well, I would, did, was there a second to Ron's motion?
No, there wasn't. We're still, it's still open. Go ahead.
Well, I would, I would make a motion that we advance this to town meeting, but without our recommendation. That it go, that it go to town meeting, but not recommended by the planning board. That would be my proposal. And to the point that's just made, it would be up to the people of the town to vote and then the AG's office to make a decision. If the supporters of the project and the initiative are there and make good, good arguments or whatever, people want to ask what our opinion is. But I think, again, the, without a planning staff, without any professional staff, the, you know, the planning board is, is looked to, to provide insight and advice and at least what I'm hearing is that there's enough of us on the board that have concerns, maybe not specifically about this property, but about the precedent and about the fact that it could be considered spot zoning and may create a cascading series of events in that area of town. So, but to a point that Bob Bartlett has made, you let the voters decide, but you provide them some, some advice, or at least knowing that it comes without our recommendation.
Can I ask you a question? Why wasn't this brought? We've been doing this for a couple of months now. And now all of a sudden, today, this is being brought up?
Well, it's-
I wasn't aware of this transaction until the public notice.
Correct. Neither was I.
And, and since I'm familiar with, with the Duval property.
Yeah. I'm just saying because I know that you, I'm guessing that you work in this office here or whatnot.
I'm a volunteer in the community.
Okay, all right, all right.
But it's just the public notice that alerted me and I got to Mike and, and I said, what's going on here?
I was just wondering, because like I said, it's kind of all of a sudden.
No, it's just, it's all public notice and as I said, I apologize, I missed the last meeting, but I've had some reservations about this and this is my first opportunity to raise it. You know, again, it's, it's, the challenge is, is that separating this from what you want to do there and how you might want to use those buildings and the amount of traffic that will come in and out of North Hatfield versus the bigger issue of what this might mean down the road. So I have a motion on the table.
I'll second Bob's motion. I'd like to see it move on and if we, let the people up there make their decision and it goes on to the attorney general, it gets kicked back. But at least he gets it on air and let the public decide.
Okay, we have a second. We have a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm opposed, so.
Okay. Vote carries three to one. It'll be on, I'll get with Wilma tomorrow and it'll be on the warrant, but it will be not recommended by the planning board.
Okay.
And we'll turn it over to the, it'll be in the hands of the voters at the town meeting.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Are we to now vote on the division of land? Go ahead and, and, because isn't this important to the-
I think this is putting the cart before the horse.
What's that, that division of land?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, they have to rezone, oh, well, yeah, because it has to be divided that way. Has it already been divided?
No. Why don't we create the lot so at least it won't be ambiguous at town meeting?
Well, this is.
Do I have a copy?
This is created.
It isn't? No, we have the Mylar right here.
Didn't we sign that last time?
No, I guess not.
This is a, this is a, isn't this an A and R approval?
All we had was this sketch to be used in the public hearing only. Now we have, we have a plan suitable for recording.
I have no problem with the lot looking like that, even if it stays ag residential. Because, you know, it could still be an agricultural activity with the road frontage and you could have a house, your farmer could buy that and have the house up front and then have a lane to the back road. I'm totally fine with approving that.
Well, that would be, that would be a change in use though, wouldn't it? To put a house on it?
No, because it's ag residential right now, so he's allowed to have a house on there, he just didn't have road.
Those, these are just like outbuildings.
Yeah, those are outbuildings.
Those are just some buildings on his property.
So.
I guess, yeah, I guess you're right.
Yeah, because actually that makes more sense because otherwise, what are they approving? They need to approve a lot, a zoning change for that lot.
Which is not a lot.
Which is not a lot.
If you don't get that front on there, that's right.
Until we don't get that signed.
That's right.
So, we'll have to stamp it and sign it?
Yeah.
All right.
Good, good point, Ron.
Shall we?
Good catch, yeah. Should we go get Wilma?
Do we need to vote on it? I mean, as, as a board.
Well, didn't we sign that plan last time?
As a board.
Didn't, because it wasn't-
It wasn't, it wasn't.
It was just a, it was one of these things, we didn't have any.
Oh, okay, all right, okay. It was a concept.
All right, okay.
All right, well, I make a motion to approve the lot as drawn and submitted by, I guess it's Duval logging.
No, it's, oh, well, yes.
Oh.
Right, with the agent being Phil Andrew-Cities.
Right.
All right, so we'll have to get the stamp and do that.
So we need, but we need to have a vote on that.
Okay, so, second it?
We have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the motion carries.
Is, so where, where is Wilma? Does she have to go?
I don't know where she went. She said she might be leaving, and I guess she, she did leave. So, you want to get the book annex going here?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, gentlemen from the book annex. Folks have a chance to sign in.
We have not, and we will do that.
Let me see if Wilma is still here.
Okay.
Or, Frank, is, can you see if Wilma is still here? And if she is, we should maybe get that stamp to do that plan.
I'm sorry, what does the stamp say?
It's a, it's a, well, maybe what you're doing is fine, but it's usually something that she puts, that stamps it, it's got...
It's got the date.
It's blue ink and...
That we, you know, we all signed it, stated it, and stamped.
Because it's already a registry block, right? Isn't that where we sign?
But I think we have to have the town of Hatfield thing on it. I guess we can. All right, I'm sorry.
Not at all. Please, thanks. Good evening.
Mr. Cochran?
No, closed, though.
Okay.
Mr. Reedy. Maybe I'm not on there.
Probably not on there.
I'll step up anyways. Well, good evening, I'm Tom Reedy, I'm an attorney with Bacon Wilson over in Amherst, here on behalf of Five College Incorporated. With me this evening is Mark Arnold, the site engineer, John Reposo from Cutler, the building design team, and Neil Abram, the executive director of Five Colleges Incorporated. And so we are here on an informal basis, March 31st, we submitted an application for site plan review for the approval of a nonprofit educational use, librarianics, a 35,000 square foot librarianics at the property at the, the intersection of West Street and Plain Road here in Hatfield. And so we are going to be on for the public meeting, which is what's required for that administrative site plan approval, on May 4th. But we wanted to meet with you on an informal basis to show you the plans that we've got so far, to hear your feedback, if you've had any questions or concerns or anything that we could address in this interim before we actually come before you on May 4th. So we thought it was probably a good idea to open up the floor. So, it is a library use, it's for the shelving, the processing, and the circulation of library and print materials. So if you're aware, Five Colleges deals with the associated institutions are Amherst, Mount Holyoke, Smith, the University of Massachusetts at Amherst, and Hampshire College. And it's a nonprofit educational corporation, it's a collaborative use, and what this site would be used for is not only the shelving and the processing of that print material, but also there'd be administrative offices there and also some study rooms and space for faculty, staff, and students to use that site to take the books out, to use it at that site and then to return it there. There'd also be a delivery to and amongst the other institutions, the associated institutions. And there'd be some meeting rooms for collaboration with faculty amongst those associated institutions. We've got in, in the packet, and I don't know if you've been provided it, we had submitted, but there's a Dover Amendment letter in there, just putting a finer point articulating, because under the, I'll back up, under the Hatfield zoning bylaw, you have a use category for nonprofit educational purposes, and it's site plan review, and then it's somewhat blank as to what rules apply. And so turning to the Dover Amendment, you look that, you can regulate the bulk, the height, the yard sizes, the building coverage, and the setbacks, somewhat limitedly, those are the dimensional pieces. We do meet all of those requirements here in the town of Hatfield. And the zoning bylaw and the board cannot unreasonably regulate this use as a nonprofit educational use. So I guess that's a little bit of the background, and to give you some oversight on the site, I'll turn it to Mark and...
Can I have a question before we start?
Please.
My, my question would be from, from a business standpoint, is four of the five colleges, and I don't know if you support the colleges in Springfield as well, the Springfield College and Bay Path and Western New England Law School and all that kind of stuff, why isn't it a library being built on that side of the river, which is closer access, like on UMass or Amherst or Hampshire College area, where your, the students, faculty, and the physical plant is very, very close, instead of having to come across that bridge every day?
Sure. And I...
How often?
So I guess, two answers, and one is that Smith College is on this side of the river. But secondarily, you know...
That's one out of five.
Given, right, but given, and I'm sure the board's aware that we attempted to have this permitted in Hadley, and you have to find a very specific site for this building because it needs the appropriate, and I'll turn it over to the engineer to explain it more succinctly, but the appropriate ground underneath to make sure that it's as stable as can be. And so this site checked out as one of the sites where it would work, and it's also in close proximity to 91. I mean, it has some pretty good access. You'll see, if you're familiar with the site, both access are coming off 91 North and then getting on 91 South are both pretty easy. I don't know if you want to expand any?
Let me add that currently, twice a day, our courier stops at six library sites that we have already, including one in the old Strategic Air Command bunker on the notch, and at five post office, actually, six post offices. So, the run a loop, picking up things and delivering things, run a loop again, so we do that twice a day. Running by Smith to UMass, this would add maybe five minutes, because you just go a different way from Smith to UMass than the way you would. So, our design criteria for locating was still be able to run the same courier twice a day, connecting to the various sites. And we think the primary use, as is true for the volumes we have in the site, in the bunker, is that most people want it on their desks, in their rooms, in their libraries. So they, they submit a request and within 18, 24 hours, it's there on campus, as if it had been in the library on campus. And so there's relatively little come to the space to use it. It's a possibility for someone who wants to use a lot of things, so there's not a big book truck load of stuff that has to be trucked around, but most users will recall the items. And so as long as you're close to the delivery system for the recall, it'd make good sense for us. It would, centrally located would cut some minutes off the various distances, but this fell within our criteria of still being able to run the route twice a day. And so we, we looked everywhere from South Adelaide to Sunderland as possibilities, north-south and east-west, from East Hampton to, to nearly close to Belcher Town, as we looked for sites that would be good. Central is better, but close to the route is good enough.
Okay.
Just to orient you very quickly, this being north, this is Plain Street, Plain Road, coming into CNS, that location, they must be familiar with it. The northern area, there's a little wetland here, this is a buffer zone, there's some wetlands in this area here, there's a buffer zone in this location. Just to orient very quickly, and the next picture essentially shows you the overall site, we'll give into detail about the actual building itself, but show you the relationship to other concerns that the town may have. The blue line is 100-foot buffer zone from a wetland, so we made sure we stayed out of that location. Same thing, these are the wetlands, this is the buffer zone, our project is outside of that as well. This is an endangered species location, we're away from that. This is the zone two for the aquifer, for the well, and so we're out of that. So all of our development is outside of any resource area, outside of buffer zone, so we felt it was, you know, simply located to accommodate the site.
Before you jump off of that, for the purposes of, I can see it, but for the folks that are watching on television, you showed us Plain Road and the access to CNS. Can you just sort of sketch Route 5?
Now, this is, this is Route 5 coming here, coming around here, and then to go to CNS, there's a driveway that comes down this way, comes off to, to Plain Road. This is the off-ramp from 91, northbound off-ramp of 91.
And the little logging house, log house model is right there.
Across the street.
It's across the street?
Yeah. The new, the new building, the log house is right across the street here.
Right, uh-huh, yep, okay.
So this, again, just orient you to the entire site, showing you where we would be outside of resource areas or areas of concern. This is, again, is just a blow up, this is the building, a blow up that location. Again, this is the plan as it stands today, we're here to get your input. Some of the things you don't see on here is plantings. We understand we'll have to put plantings in screening appropriate for the site design. We did extensive test pits out there for both drainage as well as septic system, it's a very good site for that, fine sand, two minute perch grade, there was a water table there we have to be a little bit concerned about, but, so the site is very conducive to drainage, it's very flat, gives us a little bit of an issue. But in general, we have the building, portion of the building would go to an infiltration system to accommodate runoff, as both infiltration and recharge. The southern part of the building would be going into a open detention recharge basin. The parking lot, we would collect it in a closed drainage system, clean it out to make sure we accommodate the suspended solids, make sure it's clean water before we send it off-site, which is a requirement that we would do, before we send it to the detention basin. The entire site presently sort of drains this way, goes through an existing culvert, so we're maintaining the same drainage characteristics, drainage patterns that we have today. So we're not really changing anything, all the calculations and drainage shows that maintain peak flows, we're going to maintain water quality, maintain recharge in accordance with both the state's outdoor guidelines as well, see the town of Hatfield requirements.
So that's, the building is what we're seeing to the left here, and this, everything else is a, is a parking lot?
This is administrative portion of the building, this is the actual storage shelving area, and John can get into the details, I'm the outside guy.
Yeah.
He's the inside guy. Again, this is the parking, we would come in with a, with a standard parking scenario, this area in the middle would be green, we put the green in there primarily to comply with the zoning requirements for amount of green space within a parking area, so that's primarily why this is here. And again, we're talking small, we're not talking semi-trucks come in here, but the box trucks come in back up here. This is the loading dock area, it's not really a loading dock, there's roll, there's doors there, it's not a four-foot-high loading dock, so you could easily accommodate the cars here, and then this would be where the staff and visitors would be parking. Again, what you don't see is the landscaping, which we do screening, there's some small HVAC units here, the septic system, we did some perk tests out there with the Board of Health to accommodate, make sure it would be, so this is a formal legal perk, perk test, this location. We're still playing with some of the locations of some of the utilities, like the propane tank, we haven't shown here, but we're probably going to move it or screen it, so, but generally, not to spend a lot of time on the site plan, but that's basically what we have, I don't know if you have any comments or questions or concerns?
How many cars would be in the parking lot, or does that accommodate?
I believe it's 35 cars.
Of which, we're providing 43.
It's actually 43, there are two handicap spaces and 41 and 42 others.
I'm sorry, the number of employees that would be on site?
We, we are expecting a maximum of 12 employees, and then we have a couple of meeting rooms, so we're taking the capacity of the two meeting rooms.
So you'd have 12, potential 12, 12 to park cars there from eight to five, or whatever your hours are.
And then shorter hour visitors who might use the two meeting rooms.
Coming and going of the...
Is that a, those meeting rooms, I'm just out of curiosity, is that something that you'll make available to the community, so like if CISA wanted to have a more centrally located?
On a scheduled, available basis, as we do our offices in Amherst.
This building have windows in it? Oh.
John, John, because if you want to go to the inside, John would be glad to show you the building.
There are good reasons for the two parts of there.
What you see here is really just the renderings of the posed elevations and rendering of perspective view here. The office area has windows along, along their perimeters, is the access to the loading areas.
Okay.
The actual module, larger module doesn't have, doesn't have any windows, because we have to keep it to a certain humidity control in there for the books and the other material that they might have. So the main entrance is right into this area here. This is the main entrance here, this is the loading area here. So the building itself, this portion here, the module, is 34 and 1/2 feet high, the office area is 24 feet high, so you have the two different levels, which you see here. And the actual materials, concrete tilt, we actually make the panels on-site, because it offers the big, the most thermal value, and we tilt them up into place.
So that west elevation, the bottom-left picture, that's what you'll see from Route 5?
This is the, oh, so the Route 5 is...
That one, yeah, the bottom, yeah.
Yeah, Plain Road is, yeah, that CNS trucks will have it in the street. I'm thinking more of the, the path that most people would be driving and, and then maybe even route the interstate.
So if I may, Route 1 in the center-right, as you're driving down from the north, coming up, coming south on West Street, the first thing you would see would be the end, which is what's up on the center-right.
Yeah.
Right? And then as you drive past it, you look to your left, if that's safe, and you'll see what's in the lower left.
Right, right, yep, okay.
And coming up from the south, which is really, coming up from the ramp, the off-ramp of 91, as it comes off to the north, you would see the, the lower right, which is, you just see the big wall.
Right.
But because of the angle, we have to get into the actual geometry there, there's both screening of shrubs and there's the angle of the ramp that is already partially screened as you drive north on the off-ramp from I-91.
Okay.
It provides some interesting flat wall space, and I know the town has some interest in murals, providing education and so forth, and we certainly would be open to discussions with the schools about either, I've talked to the architect, I haven't told about this, but could we put the paint directly on the concrete walls? Or would we put some boards up that would support the murals? It would be a nice way to add murals as we have already on West Street that anyone's enjoying.
That's right, yeah, there's one just down the road from you guys on...
On the tobacco barn.
On the Malinowski barn, yep. Any other provisions that are probably are less of specific to our decisions, but green roof, solar panels?
We are designed for such energy efficiency that it would be our only building, we lease for a dollar a year space from Amherst College for the rest, or, so, so we don't have much of an electricity bill, this would be our first major electricity bill. So we could put up some solar for that, but then we have nowhere else to put the credit if we had bigger solar installation. So we're not considering that at this time, and we have avoided solar on the big roof. Now, if we did solar, we might do it on the smaller roof at some point with appropriate If we did solar, we might do it on the smaller roof at some point with appropriate approvals. Solar on the big roof both requires more reinforcement and creates additional traffic on a roof that we're hoping to keep very well sealed to avoid water infiltration for the books. So with low energy use, there's not a lot of payback for, for the solar insulation, though it would be a, a nice prime spot facing south. If we could do something with the electricity that was generated, we don't yet have a plan for that, but it would require additional reinforcement of the roof to bear the weight. And without a plan for the benefit, we haven't designed it for that.
Okay.
There would be other parts of the property to the south of where this development is. If you look on the one that's down on the floor, there's open space facing south where you could do ground-mounted, that would be screened in a way by the, by the height of the building, if the consideration were that. But we're not proposing that at this time.
For the, for the runoff off of the building itself, is that gonna be, are these gonna, could these go into rain gardens or anything like that? Is there a way to try and keep as much of this on-site for plantings and?
Yeah, again, the, most of the water will stay on-site. Again, this roof section here is gonna go, this is a subsurface recharge system. So all this water is clean water, we can send it straight into the ground. And again, this pipe here actually serves as an infiltration system as well. And then this discharge pipe is actually a very small pipe, most of this area here will be recharging as well. So this is almost functioning as a rain garden. It doesn't quite technically meet the definition from the state storm, or stormwater perspective. There needs to be four feet of separation between groundwater and the bottom of the system. And by the time we put this in here, we don't have that, so we can't technically call it a rain garden, but it's going to function as one.
So that, and if you're back into this thing, that's gonna be a raised septic system over there on the side?
Ah, yes, the groundwater is down around five feet down, so I don't imagine it's gonna be a very raised system. It's only be a couple of feet up, 'cause the, the bottom of the system only has to be five feet down. It's a very small system with about thirty maximum people, with a two-minute per- perk rate. So it's a very small two-train system, but we will have to pump it, so it will be raised.
Yeah, okay, yeah. The, with the flat roof, what about if we get a massive amount of snow, a snow?
The roofs are, the roofs are designed to support the snow based on this area.
And there is a tilt.
There is, got a little pitch to it?
Yeah, the water does slope at a quarter inch. Down the middle is the high point, then it slopes at a quarter inch each side.
Oh, okay.
Quarter inch per foot?
Yes.
And then the question I have is about the humidity or the temperature, air conditioning or whatever you, what do you got? That, that system itself, is that inside, outside?
The majority of the mechanical equipment are on a mechanical mezzanine inside the building. There are a couple of compressors on the outside of the building, they're small.
Concern about noise generation?
Yeah, the main noise will be inside the, the equipment platform.
And the compressors will be where, John?
They have, I think, a smaller unit up here for, I think, the administrative portion, and there's a bank of compressors down here.
So one facing I ninety-one, and then facing Plain Road?
This is a small one facing ninety-one, and then the larger ones would be facing Plain Road.
And I believe they were like seventy to seventy-five decibels on like ten feet away.
And those would be screened when we're through with the site design.
And then, I don't know, I can't see it from here, but... So always a concern for people is lighting in the, you know, the, the lighting in the parking lot for nightlights or streetlights or whatever you call it?
Right, we, we have, again, this is, we're in the early stages, but we, we are showing some, some lighting here. We haven't designed it exactly, so there will be lighting here. We can provide photometrics for you as we finalize the design and, I don't know, the, the hours of operation.
The primary hours of operation will be, I think, eight to five or eight to six. There may be some occasional evening meetings. Our thought is that we can use infrared cameras to provide security rather than lighting the walls of the buildings all night. And that parking lot lights would be either motion sensor activated or on timers so that they would come on only when there is activity and not remain on.
You anticipate having a, a gate there or a physical, a first, a physical person on, on-site as a security-type person at all?
We don't presently anticipate that, just to have camera monitoring and to have a security service that would, would monitor that, which may be one of the colleges and maybe a private security monitor.
So it's, yeah, while this is zoned appropriately for this building, you're not that far away from some residential houses, you know, just as you're heading down Route, North on Route five. So just the lighting is, is in it?
Yeah, but they're not gonna light it like a car dealership, they're gonna light it very, it's gonna be...
Many of the warehouses, right, have, have wall lights, down-facing wall lights that renovate the walls all night. And we don't see any reason for that, we think we can meet our security needs without that.
And do you anticipate the project attracting anyone to move into Hatfield? Do you see, I mean, probably all existing staff at this point, or?
They're all existing staff, we have staff turnover of four or five positions, and folks live from Springfield to Conway.
They can take the truck twice a day. Twice a day you can change, you go twelve-hour shifts.
Well, right now, I should say, right now, we park our shuttle van in a garage in our property that we leased from Amherst College, in Amherst. But with the two garage bays that this has, we might truck, park the truck here, and the driver would come here first and begin and end the route here. But to your earlier point, no, we don't anticipate expanding our employee base in a way that would attract additional employees.
Is this a five-day-a-week service? Or do you?
The long-term service is five days a week, we may have some periods where we're providing some weekend service. The usual collection, long-term collection, is low-use materials. We do anticipate providing this space to help Smith while they do their building project in their library. They've hired a big architect, they're gonna gut and renovate and tear down parts of it. So they wanna displace for two years a million volumes.
Temporary storage.
Temporary, while that, this is our long-term place, we could temporarily offer this space to them. And since that's, most of the books that belong to Smith College, they would want some weekend and evening retrievals.
What's the maximum book capacity storage? Not, take, take the Smith College out of the equation?
So, so of course, that depends on how big your book is, both how tall and how thick. The estimates based on our current collections are, this could be over two million individual items, a range of two-point-one to two-point-five, depending on exactly which items they choose to send to us.
Is there a point in time when these books go to some kind of, you know, like, this kind of stuff?
Digital medium?
This gentleman has a, an iWatch on, he can probably look that book up and read it on his iWatch. Do you see that? I mean, the, the trend is, you can get any kind of book you want, go home on your iPad or your computer, or your, probably your iPhone and your iWatch.
It's a really good question, and you might as well be a trustee of one of the colleges who asks exactly this question. The libraries now, across all five libraries, order about eighty percent of what they get for students, faculty members, to read electronically. But they're still adding twenty percent of the dollars they spend is for print, for a variety of reasons. One is that it's not available electronically, and the other is that the use requires handling it, touching it, measuring it in ways that you can't yet do well electronically. The librarians will say, as we know from our iPhones and anything else we have, in three to five years, there's a new technology, and you're not sure that you can, how many of us have the old three-and-a-half-inch Macintosh disks or the five-and-a-quarter-inch floppies?
I threw five of them away this afternoon.
Right, I still got boxes of these things. The question is, how do you keep the electronic versions upgraded and upgraded and upgraded? So librarians say nothing electronic has lasted more than about twenty years and maybe isn't readable at the end of that twenty-year period, whereas paper lasts two, three hundred years. And so librarians are in the business of making sure you still have copies at the end of the day for the future. What the colleges have done is to say, if one of these books goes into storage, we'll only take that copy. We won't take second copies or third copies or fourth copies. We'll keep one copy of each thing for the long term. So the libraries are making choices. Nobody has used this in twenty years, maybe we can keep one and meet whoever wants it twenty years from now and make decisions to find good homes for the others that we have. And in our purchasing, we've already reduced the overlap of purchasing by half. It used to be about forty percent of what was bought in print duplicated something one of the other colleges have, and that's down to about twenty percent. So, so it is trending that way, but there is a sense of long-term need to keep print materials. It includes archival materials that are unique and includes records for which you want to be sure that you can back up if the electronic use is fair. Sometimes the electronic copies have a, somebody bumped the camera, and so you have a blurry image, and they've done so many of them, they didn't keep track, and somebody says, can I go back and look at a good, solid copy of that page? So about half of the requests we get for our half-million volumes that we currently have in this kind of facility, we get about five thousand requests a year. Half to two-thirds of those requests are, could you give me a photocopy of two or three pages? And we send that to them electronically, and only about a third are physical recalls of the items.
So this is truly the cloud of the bound volume?
Yes, this, this is the, the local cloud of raw print material.
Fantastic.
That's a good, very good, very good analogy.
There you go. And that's from a seventy-four-year-old who really doesn't know, really doesn't know what the cloud is. But I got enough, I got enough there to know, to know that one.
You absolutely got it.
It's a warehouse. There isn't anything that we can do tonight, right?
What about musical? I mean, you mentioned print media, but...
So we could have, well, we would also have some films and videotapes. We will have microfiche films and cards. There would be musical scores, a variety of print materials, could be business archival records, things that people want to keep and retrieve. So most of it would be standard library materials, bound journals, magazines, sorts of things, and individual books that haven't been checked out in a while and therefore can be moved to where they can be brought back quickly, but not take up space on campus where increasingly people want food and drink and music and talk as students work together and work with faculty members. Libraries are no longer hush-hush, perfectly pure spaces. But that means that there are ambient humidity and ambient temperature, and if you wanna preserve a book for two hundred years, you'd rather have it at fifty or sixty degrees and a constant humidity, because it's the absorption and drying out that flexes the paper and ages it and maybe opens it to mold and so forth. So the climate control helps to preserve things for the longer.
Do you ever have available internships from your program? I'm just wondering if there's an opportunity to, to connect with Smith Academy beyond just maybe doing some artwork and murals?
We do on the campuses, because there are more, there are more things to get involved with, like the archives and the art museums and so forth. So there are both high school internships and college student internships and recent graduate internships. There's not that much here, because most of the work involves sizing books. You store them by size, not by call number. So you're sorting them into piles of, these are all one size and these are all different sizes. So these need shelves this far apart, and these need shelves this far apart. So you're trying to use the space efficiently, unlike a library where you have big, small, big, small, big, small. So there's not a lot to learn there in the high school student internship style. I think we're open to that generally for fine college operations. This is probably not the best of those options.
So is there like an automatic racking system in there? Or how, or you get, how, how do, I mean, you have, it's gonna be thirty-five feet high, so you have?
Shelves are about twenty-three feet high, about three feet deep. So we store the books in trays that are eighteen inches long, adjusted for the size of the books, or you match the size of the books to the size of the trays. You slide in two trays end-to-end, and that's thirty-six inches deep. You run down an aisle, you've got thirty-six inches deep on both sides of the aisle. And this is designed with eleven aisles. That would have, there'd be single thirty-six-inch-deep shelves against the walls. And eleven aisles with sort of thirty-six inches on either side of the pylons that's supported up twenty-three feet. So you can use one kind of access equipment for the first six feet, and then you'll have higher safety lifts that will carry you up to retrieve the books that are stored in the top twelve or thirteen feet.
One other question that I have is a traffic study. I can't find it in here, but that may come up somewhere, and I can't recall where... Isn't there some other project that we have where somebody had asked for a, I think it was about one of the housing projects?
Right.
Someone had asked about a traffic study, but if you're not gonna be in there twice, it ain't that important. And maybe something to think of.
Whole lot more tractor-trailers.
We could prepare a traffic generation report. I don't know if we need to get into the level of service on Plain Road or at the intersection of Plain Road and West Street. I think the traffic here is gonna be, in general, five to twelve people in the morning, five to twelve in the afternoon, in the day. We may have a couple occasions, so we could prepare essentially a traffic generation report in a summary, I guess.
I would suggest.
That's where we're here to get the input, input from you, do you need?
I think it'd be a good idea just, just to have it in case somebody asks a question.
So what's the typical traffic, morning, afternoon, coming vehicles?
You're not gonna have, you know, and you're not gonna have, you know, it's not like a public library. When people say libraries coming to Hatfield, they're thinking of, okay, I can go to the library, you know, so what are you gonna have, fifty people there, fifty, fifty trips, a hundred trips a day, you know? But I, I don't think that's gonna be it. You said, you know, ten to twelve people come to work, park their cars, your truck comes in and out, and there might be an occasional few people there in the course.
Occasional meeting will have twelve people who probably are more likely to come in twelve different cars than, than in carpooling, but there'd be some of each.
We'll prepare a report to hand.
This is just a dumb question, but the weight must be phenomenal on that piece of ground once that building is low.
True. One of the issues, issues, one of the aspects of the design, there's beautiful sand for about ten feet down, and underneath that, there's clay. And so with the way this building being as large it is, we're gonna have to preload the site to sort of compress the site down to where it's supposed to be, so when we construct the building, it doesn't spring back or doesn't settle. But that's part of the design process, and we've had geotack to know where people look.
Well, you have that, yeah.
And make that recognition.
'Cause I was starting to think, man, you got eleven racks of them, think twenty-three feet high, book, book, holy cats. Man, you got some weight, that's a lot of weight.
Right, we're thinking total hundreds of pounds per square foot, maybe five, six hundred, six, seven hundred pounds per square foot. And so the calculation from the geotack was that it might...
We're preloading with thousands of pounds per square foot.
So it might compress under that load, about four inches. And so we wanna get three inches at least of that compressed out.
Boy, that's amazing.
And pump, wick the water out through wick drill drains before we begin the building.
So to the traffic study, you have a copy of our zoning bylaws? Okay, so I'm not sure if it is an exact fit, but there's some good guidance here in six-point-three-three and six-point-four-three provides access, traffic impacts.
in six-point-three-three and six-point-four-three provides access, traffic impacts and parking discussions for both commercial and industrial development performance standards. So take a look at those. There's a discussion in there about what a traffic impact statement should look like.
Sure, and, you know, so to come back to that ten-thousand-foot view because of the nonprofit educational purpose of this, we're, we don't specifically fall into that commercial or industrial use, but I think for guidance, if we're going to put a traffic impact statement or study together, it'll probably be along the lines.
Yeah, that's what I'm suggesting is use this as some guidelines for that, some signposts.
Kyle, I know you've been talking. Is there any, any concerns that from?
No, I've been working with the Almaz government for several months. So I feel pretty comfortable with all of them and I think it'd be a good fit for Hatfield.
Okay. You guys got any other questions or?
Right now.
Anything else you guys?
Maybe we should mention one other thing, which is to get the water flow that we'll need for the sprinklers. Currently, there's a six-inch water main that runs down Plain Road that comes off from West Street, which doesn't have the flow capacity to serve. So there's a ten-inch water main down on the other end of Plain Road and our current plan is to connect to that, which provides the town with an interconnection between two stubs of the water system.
At a pretty high dollar cost and benefit to the town.
So, how far does that connect?
It's about half a mile of additional ten inches that we would install.
At the, so it's at the north end there? You'd be, or you're the south end? Closer to CNS?
So there's currently a ten-inch line under the railroad tracks. But it's at the butt end of the six-inch line that comes down Plain Road.
There's a existing ten-inch line, the railroad track, they did it that one time and it's a dead end here. And then the six-inch line comes down, ties into that. And I did some hydro flow tests here, we're marginal in the water. And also did hydro flow test down Plain Street where the end of the ten inches and that's very good. So we would run the water from the south end of Plain Street, about twenty-four hundred feet up to this existing ten, connect it through. And hopefully at that point in time, we'd have enough water to do that. But that would be improving the whole flow system for the town plus an increased infrastructure that would be provided as well. Anything particular that, yeah, again, do a lot of site plan reviews and submissions, anything that the board sees or has a concern with or would like to see additional? What's missing primarily on here is the planning and the screening. Is there something else that the board has a concern or observes?
I can't, I can't think of any, but.
Yeah, I think the screenings, the plantings and screenings would be good to see.
Yeah, but we definitely know that.
And that will definitely be something that maybe some of the abutters or neighbors will bring up, so.
So maybe we can do some elevations from road locations to see what it would look like from the road. And of course, if we screen the west side of the building, we can't, we can't put up the murals. You'll have to tell us which you prefer.
Primarily, I'm thinking of screening, screening the loading dock area, screening some of the like transformer and the.
Propane tanks.
Propane tank, et cetera. And the reason we haven't really done a planning yet, we're still playing with the location of those items to make sure they are statically pleasing and plus function properly. We don't want to create too distinct planting plans. So we don't want to find hiding the building behind a wall of trees. Make it look nice and provide appropriate trees on the roadway and screening of the utility infrastructure.
What about a sign? Is there signage?
We talked about a sign, a big neon.
I don't, I don't know that we need anything larger than the CNS sign. This is like a turn for the five college library annex. There's no need for, no need for a big sign. There's none of it.
Probably need a bigger sign to make sure CNS trucks don't pull in.
Arrow pointing.
Backing them out of there all night.
Yeah, if there's a traffic jam, it will be because the road is full of tractor-trailers waiting to pull into CNS.
All right, I don't know, I don't have any, I don't have any questions.
All right, looks good to me, I'll tell you.
Very great.
I didn't know what they were going to do with Marty's property. But Marty got it finally found out after fifty years.
Marty and Marty Jr. are both happy. We asked them, so what's that building up there at the nose? He said, I forget. I said, but it's got toilets in it. So that was for the flea market. So we're learning all kinds of history there.
Oh, Marty, there you go.
Marty remembered that when we asked him.
Hey, Paul, before you leave, we have to close the meeting.
Okay.
So I move to close the meeting.
Okay.
Do we have unfinished business?
We've got to approve the minutes of February twenty or.
Thank you, thank you.
February twenty-fourth.
So one of you is Robert Hesse?
Yes, that's me.
I would be like, we'll be seeing you Thursday.
Thursday. Looks pretty cut and dry. Okay, thanks for covering it.
I gave a copy to the gentleman. Okay. Get the letter in there.
All right.
If you have any questions, you can call my phone numbers and everybody. Thank you.
Okay.
I guess we'll have to read it. Oh, no, wait, we've just got to review the minutes and then we can close them out here. Okay. These are the minutes of February twenty-fourth.
Oh, can I? Oh, we haven't closed the meeting yet.
I move that we accept the minutes as written without any changes.
Second it? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any other meeting, the only, the next, the next meeting is scheduled for May fourth?
At six-thirty, right?
Well, if we have the public forum at six, is six not good for you guys?
Well, we have a, I have a meeting at five-thirty that sometimes can go till six-thirty.
So we'll do six-thirty.
Okay.
All right.
It's my birthday, so I don't care what time you have.
Well, I have it.
Have it at my house, yeah, I know.
All right, any other, any other business, unfinished business?
Were you really antsy about that, that spot zoning thing?
Yeah, we're still, we're going to close the meeting. Make a motion to close the meeting?
I make a motion to close the meeting.
I thought we did that.
So moved? I mean, I'll second it?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is closed.